Prior to the letter that came from the state saying you have until October the 6th to correct what quote whatever they don't like. So Almond Grove jumped the gun and sent out those notices prior, last Friday, and stuck it on your door. In our case, I'm gonna do our case because I know there's some other people, there's a lot of people that have gotten them. I called Billy on Monday and asked her what they did and told her what they did. And in our situation, everything has been fixed, corrected to the best of our ability. My husband is a disabled vet. I am a stage four breast cancer, third time around. This is my home. This is my last home. This is, my kids go to school here. I graduated in 1960 from Escalon High. My granddaughters and grandchildren are all, the last five of our seven are in this high school. I don't wanna go and there's a lot of people in the unit that don't want to move. They're widows, they have no place else to go. And I don't know, I guess you guys can't do anything to help us, kinda thing. But I did get a guarantee from Billy that you will not be out of your home. So far, we're still waiting.
Who's Billy again, please?
Billy is, her name is on the letter.
I'll ask you a question.
B E N E D E T T I. And her phone number is 916-500-2154.
She's with the State of California Housing?
Yeah, she's with the Housing Development or, not Housing Development, but.
CD. Okay.
Anyway, this is what's happening to a lot of our seniors. And as Escalon, I really feel that, I mean, I, my neighbor next door to us is waiting to try to get in toss.
Give her a couple more minutes.
The little one over across from the city council, or city hall type thing. But there's a waiting list. She's a hundred and something.
Yeah.
And she's, has no place to go other than that. So I think it's something that Escalon needs to kinda think about as far as doing something to get some kind of housing for us older folks who are on fixed incomes, wanna be in Escalon, wanna live here and die here probably. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
After the meeting, if you'll hang around, I'd like to talk to you a little bit. If you don't, after the meeting. Okay, is there anyone else, anybody on the phones, anybody on the internet? Okay, I'm not hearing anybody chime up, so we're gonna move on to item. Where are we? Okay, public hearing, consider resolution, I believe that's 2022, establishing new permit fees for certain solar projects. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item before you was given to, we received a consensus from council to address the solar issue. We had residential solar projects for new only, and then we had somebody in town that was interested in adding to their existing system.
Retro, okay.
Correct. And we did not have a fee for that.
In place.
We didn't have any, anything other than new. And so this fee is to address people who are interested in adding additional onto their solar system.
Okay.
So we had staff evaluate new permits for certain solar services. Services for which a city imposes a user or regulatory fee typically derived from an individual person or entity's action request or behavior. Therefore, accepting cases where there is an overwhelming public benefit generated by a city's involvement in the individual action, a fee for service ensures that the individual bears most, if not all, of the cost incurred by the city to provide that service. When a fee targets quote 100% or full cost recovery, the individual is bearing the entirety of the cost. When a fee targets less than full cost recovery, another city revenue source, in most cases the general fund subsidizes the individualized activity. So industry best practice and California statute are in harmony. User regulatory fees should be set according to the estimated reasonable cost of service and should vary fair and reasonable relationship to the payer's burdens on or benefits received from the activities and/or services provided by the city. Fairly allocating costs to the services provided and recovering some or all of these costs from service recipients creates value and predictability for city customers and reimburses the city for services provided to a single party as compared to the public at large. Collecting fees for services increases the availability of the general fund revenues to be used for services and activities available to all residents and businesses such as public safety and public work services. Helps meet fee payer service level expectations by collecting fees to fund the services provided. This update represents feedback received subsequent to adoption of the city's current schedule of fees. The city's fee schedule as revised will be effective September 20th, 22, 2022. Modifications that are part of this proposed fee schedule are summarized below and are reflected in attachment A. So the development-related fees are the establishment of a permit fee for the modification of an existing completed residential solar system, and establishment of a fee for battery backup on solar systems. These proposed fees do not exceed the city's cost of providing services. The fiscal impact, the city would record, will record revenue of $221 for each solar system modification permit, and then a $73.50 for each, fee for each solar battery backup system permit. Excuse me. It is anticipated that direct staff time will cost approximately $221 for a solar system modification permit and $73.50 for a solar battery backup system permit. This does not include administrative or indirect costs. The net costs incurred will be covered by the city's general fund and may necessitate budget increases depending on number of permits issued. We have not had anybody ever pull this type of permit before, and so it seems to be pretty rare unless you're in the instance of adding to your home or adding structures to the yard that maybe you want to apply to solar.
Can I ask a question?
Sure can.
So that is the staff report, and if you have any questions.
So is this kind of in line with what the gen one had requested as far as like what Ripon was doing? Or is this similar?
It's in line in the aspect that it's a, it's a permit fee for modification. It's not gonna match what the fee is for the city of Ripon because the city of Ripon processes the permits differently.
A little different, yeah.
But for how we process our permits and the, you know, we obviously contract services out for building inspection and plan check services because we do not have staff in-house that can approve solar permits. This fee will, will cover those costs associated. And they're two separate fees. So it's the 221 for a modification of the permit, and then we also noticed that we are getting more requests separately for battery backup system permits. And so we handled that one at the same time because we were receiving more interest in adding those as well, so we added that in there. So they're two separate fees.
Has staff looked into state funding for any of this because of the fact the State of California's advocating solar and they want this to happen? Maybe there's some funding out there that can assist some people in some of the solar costs they're dealing with. Do we know of any funds are out there that we could look into?
I don't know of any funds citywide. There may be programs available to property owners.
In the state, yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, property owner.
There's tax codes.
And I'm not sure, there are tax fees, that is correct, for solar systems.
All right, well, I just think if we could find out and make that available, it takes a sting out of some of this for some people.
And we can look into that.
Yeah, let's see if we can offer them at least some lead information where they might get some relief.
Yeah, we might be able to pull up that information.
Because if we're gonna push solar, let's help them.
So if somebody has a solar system on their roof and they wanna add some solar panels like that gentleman did, they have to come to the city and get a permit for that?
Correct.
Why?
Requirement of the state in accordance with the California Building Code.
What if they do it and they don't come to the city?
And they wouldn't have a permit on the system.
They wouldn't have to pay 221 bucks?
And in the event that it came to our attention, we would, we would contact them and ask them if they need a permit.
It's just another one of those things, there's so many fees and so many ordinances and things. What was the Ripon fee? Wasn't it like $5 or something? It was something astronomically low.
Um.
The gentleman brought it up. Remember what it was?
It was low, I don't remember.
If you wanna add solar panels in Ripon, it's like $5 or something.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, I'm not absolutely sure how they do that. I believe they have an in-house building inspector.
So you said they process, they process the permits differently than we do?
Because we don't have in-house help, that's why we have to pay extra to get the help. We don't have it in-house, is what she was trying to explain.
Yeah, we have a pass through, and so we'll get billed for how much it costs. And so we basically discussed that with our, our third party that we utilize, which is CSB Consultants. And then they basically said this is how much time it would take us to review these on average, and this is the fee that we would end up charging you for it. And so we try to at least cover 100% of that pass through. This fee doesn't include any, any staff time on, you know, processing the permit application, any review that may be needed from our department in-house. It's just the outside fee that we would pay regardless.
And the reason I bring this up, and maybe there's some frustration from some people out there why I keep bringing these things up, and I have over the last four years, but, so as, if you own a business in California, you have to pay the, you have to pay $800 or $900 a year to the state to, you know, maintain your, your entity, right, your LLC or your corporation. And I've always wondered, why do I have to pay $800 a year to the State of California to refile paperwork that I've already filed? I can't imagine it takes them 100 hours to complete, you know? And so we have to be very careful with new fees and new things that we put on the books because once they're there, they never go away. And I just want to, people to keep that in mind as we, as we process things like this. It may seem small, okay, 200 bucks, $73, but I think it's a big deal.
And just to remind council, we have our master fee schedule, and because this is going to be a part of our master fee schedule for, for building permits, it'll be added to that master fee schedule. So now annually, when we're reviewing all of the city's fees at one time, it'll be on that list from now on, unless otherwise authorized by the council.
Okay. Is there any more information? Anybody else wanna speak on this item in the audience?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing, it opened, thank you. Yeah, this becomes a public hearing, now open, we'll accept any sort of input.
Hi, Jerry. Good evening.
Good evening.
So it's sort of related to this, but kind of off topic, just.
Wanna speak into the mic a little bit? Remember the thing? Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. It's, it's directed at this topic, but a little bit off. What I heard tonight was that we hire out for inspectors, is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. So maybe somewhere down the road, we need to relook at that. I have solar on my home. My solar was put on probably five years ago. Whoever inspected for our city didn't inspect because I ended up with holes in my roof and mold, and I had a lot of expenses where I had to tear out, and I live in a 1920 home, so I had to tear out plaster and mold and have a room completely reconstructed and be put in. And it's because it wasn't inspected.
We had no city inspections, is what you're saying?
No one inspected it. It was signed off, but I mean, it wasn't a city worker, so it's whoever the city hired.
Well, we have a city, yeah, we hire someone to inspect.
So what I'm asking, I guess, you know, in relation to this, is that maybe we really vet really well who we hire, and maybe it's the same person all the time, and that they're a little more responsible to actually do what they say they're gonna do. Because obviously they didn't inspect this or they would've seen it, it was very obvious. So just maybe, you know, an extra flag and whoever we interview to do our inspections in our city that they're really doing what we're paying them to do.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. But I'll tell you a little story. As a building contractor, it's not the inspector's responsibility to make sure that's all right, although it is part of his responsibility. Whose responsibility is the contractor to put the thing together? That's the person who should be accountable for the work.
I agree.
Yeah, both of them.
But then the inspector should've caught it.
Yeah, you know, some of these, yeah, they should, but they're not really, some of them aren't even qualified to do it, to be honest with you.
Then why am I paying them?
Because that's the system.
Hmm, okay, well, that's.
That's a fact.
That's what we need to.
I've had inspectors that, yeah, I wouldn't recommend them on my job. Okay, anyways, does anyone else wanna come speak? Okay, anybody online? Anybody on phones? Okay, I'm not hearing anything, we're gonna close the public hearing, bring you back to council for, we're gonna have a vote in this tonight? Okay. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
I would move on staff's recommendation on the new fee structure as outlined in item number six.
I'll, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain on this one.
We have two abstentions, and we have, wow. Let's do this again. I got all confused here. Okay, one more time. We had a motion and a second. All those in favor of the city ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And those were two abstentions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Abstain.
All right.
So it passed 3-2.
It passed 3-2. Okay. So now we're gonna move on to item.
Number seven. Consider resolution authorizing staff to submit a municipal service review update and sphere of influence plan to the San Joaquin Local Agency Formation Commission, LAFCO, for review and consideration. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Before you, we have this item for municipal services review and sphere of influence plan. This was a part of a SB 2 planning grant that was provided through the State of California to address planning processes. In that process, the city, well, this is one of the projects that we did using those grant fundings, and so we have JB Anderson here, we have John Anderson, and then we have David Niskanen.
That's correct.
Yes, I should have it by now. And they will be presenting this item for you and answer any questions, along with staff.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. David Niskanen, senior planner with JB Anderson Land Use Planning, 139 South Stockton Avenue in the City of Ripon. Tonight, we bring forth the Municipal Service Review Update and Sphere of Influence Plan. This is a, an update from the 2011 plan that council approved and recommended approval to LAFCO. So it represents an update from that document with a few changes that I'll go into detail about tonight. If you can go to the next slide, please. The MSR update and SOI is a requirement under local agency formation commission in compliance with the Cortezi-Knox Local Government Act of 2000, better known as the CKH Act. Pursuant to state law, the San Joaquin LAFCO is required to conduct an MSR of each city and service district in the county to evaluate the city's ability to provide services and land within its sphere of influence. Go to the next slide, please. Actually, the one previous to that, please. The MSR generally refers to the full range of services that a public agency provides or is authorized to provide. The review must be present information on the future projections and plans tied to the 10-year and the 30-year growth boundaries, and must also demonstrate the adequate services that, that can be provided to future development within the SOI. It doesn't necessarily mean that properties annexed as part of this effort. It is a document that just basically states that the city's providing adequate services within the city and also potentially to its outer boundaries for any annexation request. So any specific annexation request would come through a separate, completely separate process with typically a development application that would be reviewed by staff and then brought to planning commission and city council, and ultimately, local agency formation commission at individual public hearings. This document is simply a review of the city's services, and if you go to the next slide, I'll give you kind of an idea of what we look at, what's required to be in the document. First, we go through and look at the growth and population projections, both historical and also in projections in the future. The location and characteristics of any disadvantaged unincorporated communities within or contiguous to the SOI. The present and planned capacity of public facilities and adequacy of public services, that's water, sewer service, stormwater, police, fire, and things of that nature. The financial ability of agencies to provide those services. And then status and opportunities for shared facilities. A good example is what's on your agenda tonight for animal services with the City of Oakdale, so that's a shared, a shared facility. And then lastly, accountability for community service needs, including governmental structure and operational efficiencies. If you go to the next slide. We prepared as part of this an administrative draft that was reviewed and commented by city city departments, including police and fire, and then also we sent it to San Joaquin LAFCO staff for their review before going to planning commission and here tonight at city council. And overall, the MSR that's presented before you tonight affirms the city's ability to meet the MSR determinations that I just went over. And I also want to reiterate that any annexation request would be something that would be done in the future and not part of what's before you tonight. So you're not making any, any specific determinations or actions or approvals of any specific properties or anything like that. This is just a, a way of demonstrating the city's ability to provide services, both in the city as well as in the 10 and the 30-year growth boundaries. If you go to the next slide. The other part of this document is the Sphere of Influence Plan. And in general, it's a plan for the probable physical boundaries and service area of a local agency as determined by LAFCO. The SOI's purpose is, one, to promote orderly growth, two, to promote cooperative planning efforts among the cities, the county, and special districts, three, serve as a master plan for future local government reorganization, and four, it's considered a guide for proposal and studies for changes to the SOI. And typically speaking, the MSR and the SOI is updated every five years. Like I state, like I said before, the, this document is a representation of an update to the 2011 documents, so not necessarily five years ago. So sometimes there's some lag between the documents updating. But overall, it's, both the MSR and the SOI kinda, kinda go in hand in hand. If you go to the next slide, I'll give kind of an overview of the existing sphere of influence, and hopefully you can see that. The existing sphere is a total of 736 acres. It covers areas contiguous to the city. You can't annex any territory that's not adjacent to city limits or create any specific islands under LAFCO law. And there's two different growth boundaries in SOIs. There's a 10-year and a 30-year growth boundary. That doesn't necessarily mean that all the areas within the 10-year are annexed automatically into the city. Like I said before, it's a separate request that goes through the normal planning process with presenting to you and to planning commission and to LAFCO. And then there's a 20, 30-year growth boundary as well that typically is areas that are a little bit further out from the city. And if you go to the next slide, I'll provide an overview of the proposed sphere. So in the proposed sphere, everything that's in the green is representative as the 10-year growth boundary, and everything in the 30-year is in the yellow. And the proposed sphere is 795 acres, which is a 59-acre difference, so there's not a large difference between the existing and the proposed, but what we did as per direction from staff and the direction that they received, as I understand from council, is kind of move things around as far as the existing and the proposed. So what you'll see here is, you'll see a little bit more acreage in the 30-year, in the western, southwestern portion of the city compared to the existing if you go back to the slide before. And then also, we removed some areas in the northeast portion of the city. Again, that's the direction that we received from staff, and we reviewed it with LAFCO, and they felt that it was a logical, logical boundary of the 10 and the 30-year sphere of influence. If you go to the next slide, and the next one, please. So this gives a breakdown of the available vacant land within city limits based on the different general plan land use designations, and also the difference between the proposed 10-year and the proposed 30-year, and then also the total SOI. So like I said before, the existing is 736 acres, proposed is 795 with a difference of 59. This information is, is, we obtained this information from the city's most recent housing element as far as the vacant land within the city for low-density, medium-density, and high-density residential. And then we did the reviews of existing industrial land and commercial land within the city. If you go to the next slide, please. As it relates to the California Environmental Quality Act, the project qualifies for statutory exemption called feasibility in planning studies, and that's what we recommend council forward on to LAFCO. And if you go to the next slide. And staff presented the MSR update and SOI plan to planning commission on August 9th, and following the deliberation, planning commission voted 5-0 recommending city council to review and authorize staff to submit the MSR update and SOI plan to LAFCO for their review and approval. There was a couple areas of comments that planning commission had. One was the SOI boundary for the 10, 30-year. They, they felt that there was a couple properties that were in the 30-year but should've been in the 10, so we looked at that and agreed. And that's specifically in the southeast portion of the, of the city. And then they also had comments relative to fire, fire data analysis that we have in the document, and then also talked about the, talked about the overall SOI process and approval and how it goes through planning commission, council, and on to LAFCO. And if you go to the next slide, please. And staff recommends council tonight first conduct a public hearing and then approve a resolution authorizing staff to submit the MSR update and SOI plan to LAFCO for their review and approval. I'm available to answer any questions as well as staff, and then John Anderson from JB Anderson Planning is here to answer any questions as well. Thank you very much.
It'd be nice if these maps, you could see the streets they were on and stuff. It's really hard to make out some of this in terms of what they're doing here and where the streets are. I mean, I can pick up McKinley and Santa Fe and all that, but down here below, I don't know how far down these go. What's the cross streets? Do we know that? At the bottom of the yellow, what's the cross street?
It's like Jones.
Say Jones.
Jones.
Jones?
City Limits, yeah.
Okay, so Jones is at the bottom and at the very top, let's see where we've come. Then over to the west, what do we have? What's that, is that Brennan?
It is. The far west is Brennan.
Okay, and then to the north, on the very top there, what is that, Miller?
I think it's one past Miller, isn't it?
Magnolia?
Yeah, just, just south of Magnolia.
Okay. And then to the east, we're all the way out to Campbell?
Correct. City Limits, yes.
Okay.
Justin, I wouldn't say that that's Magnolia there. I mean, it's a lot, lots, like.
It's north, Magnolia's north or south.
Magnolia's way north.
And what is it, Deck?
I would estimate Deck Road.
Deck Road, okay.
I'd estimate Deck Road, yeah.
Makes sense.
And the, the triangle east to the northwest is part of the Liberty Business Park specific plan? That, that corner, the triangle piece there?
Which, by the way, being that that road to the north is Deck Road, I have a question. The golf course therefore would still not be included in the, the 30-year plan. Why is that?
Where's the golf course at?
It looks like the northernmost property going to the north would be the city property.
Up through Belota?
Yeah.
Okay, the, the two big green spots above it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like that's how, that would be the golf course, it looks like.
The last one is golf.
Oh, maybe it is. Okay, okay, okay.
That's a 10-year.
Deck, Deck goes above it. Okay, all right, okay.
Okay.
To the last green there is the golf course, though.
Looks like it, yeah.
You know what, I'm wrong, there wouldn't be Deck, there would be May on then.
And then this must be Arthur here with the little yellow triangle?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause that's the.
Is there any, is there any way you can get better maps put in for the next round?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I'd like, it'd just be easier to identify what's going on here.
Yeah, at least the major roads.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean.
Especially the foundry ones.
That's a question.
Sure, of course.
We can also, another option is, we have a next step after this, is submitting to LAFCO. So there is opportunity to.
Have input.
Update the proposed map to include the major roadways.
Okay.
Yeah, that's certainly something.
We have a question, councilman.
Just like a real basic question. With this map that you see here, how does it, how's it affect us as far as the state coming down and saying, hey, you gotta build X number of this and that?
As far as residential development is.
Correct, correct, yeah. Yeah, so by, by saying hypothetically you approve this, is that putting us in a position where now we have to, you know, expand dramatically, or I shouldn't even use the word dramatically, but expand in a way that might not be, you know, what the citizens want?
Sure.
As far as the infrastructure.
You don't have the infrastructure.
Like, so I guess what I'm getting at is the current infrastructure we have right now.
Well, not facilitated.
You're saying that. You're saying that this plan is more based on infrastructure that's, assuming it continues to grow out?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and specifically as properties annexed into the city, just generally speaking, they have to pay their own way to extend, uh, infrastructure to this, to serve that property.
Yeah.
As it relates to your question for, uh, residential development and whether or not this document would trigger any type of residential annexation, that really would be part of the city's housing element update, uh, for the next cycle in the sixth round. Um, the city does have an obligation to have enough, uh, land available for residential development per the regional housing needs allocation process, uh, through the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Uh, whether or not you would require annexation as part of that effort, you know, if you don't have enough medium or high-density residentially zoned, uh, land would be part of that process. And the due date is December 2023 on that document.
So we'd still be making case-by-case decisions?
Absolutely.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And this does not override our 75 home moratorium on home buildings. There's no effect whatsoever, so.
No. And that information's in here and that was, um, included as part of the analysis for the population projections. And there's a lengthy discussion about, um, when it was approved and how many units of 75, uh, with 100 carryover.
Roll over one time, yep.
Yeah, so.
We'll be starting our update on our housing element, uh, beginning of next year.
Okay. Are there any questions for this gentleman?
Yeah, I have another quick question. Now, there's an emphasis to the south now in the new proposed plan. Why is that?
Well, the areas to the, to the west, uh, adjacent to city limits are, and actually to the east are industrially zoned land. Um, I don't think there's a, a specific efficiency in the amount of land within the city that's owned industrial. But what this allows council to do is if there's a request for an additional industrial land, it being within the sphere is really like the first step. So it just provides a little bit more flexibility for council to make decisions on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, and then from what I'm understanding, just going through the MSR, it all, it sounds like for this to potentially build out, okay, theoretically, we would have, we have the infrastructure to support that?
Over time.
Over time, yeah. We don't have the infrastructure now to support it.
No.
But it'd be over time. And again, the means by which would be the developers.
They're built, they're either way. And they pay impact fees and they spend infrastructure.
We're not gonna blow up in a huge city tomorrow.
No.
We'll probably be, yeah, it's gonna be a little time. Okay, all right, thank you.
And this is our, our first step, municipal services review, because we had it out of date. Um, now that we've updated this, staff will be moving forward with updating our master plans to coincide with our municipal services review. And so those will be coming to council one at a time, um, over the next one to two years to update them as well.
Okay. Are there any more questions for this gentleman?
I'm fine, thank you.
How about anyone in the audience? Do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Public hearing. Yeah, and actually mayor, I have a question for him, if I may.
Well, go ahead.
Come on back. Section four, uh, go to the map in section four. So at the bottom on section four, page 30, it says exhibit 4.2 below regarding the census tracks.
Yeah.
But that exhibit, there is no, first of all, there's no exhibit 4.1. This is 4.2 and that one exhibit isn't labeled at all. So I'm assuming that's 4.2, which would really be 4.1. Um, I, from what I'm looking at, I can't see, get any, any real information out of this map picture.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Yeah, and it's, the, the reason why and the reason for that is cause the, the census tract itself, you have one in the city, of course, and then the second one that's in the county is so large. But I can work with, um, work with the city's engineer to update this exhibit, cause there's, actually gets into a little bit finer detail with census block groups. And I have that exhibit that I can use and have them updating. It gets zoomed in a little bit more.
Well, if we had some overlays too, would help. Maybe some overlays, giving us a better idea where we're at. Showing the map as a basic, then throw the roads in and then the color on top and see where everything goes.
Okay, understood. I can work with the city's engineer on that.
Yeah, besides just the technicalities there. So what is being discussed? There, there's two tracks that are disadvantaged, unincorporated. Is that?
No, I'd like to correct you. The, the discussion as part of section four is, uh, any disadvantaged, unincorporated communities within this SOI.
Mm-hmm.
What this is demonstrating that is that the city does not have any disadvantaged communities as it relates to SB 244, which is how that's defined is any census block groups or any areas of the SOI that are less than 80% of the state median household income. And so what we did, and we followed other, um, documents, other MSRs, and then there was a, a policy link, um, document that did a whole San Joaquin Valley review. Um, and they compared the, uh, 2,000 median household income that the state has and compared that with the, uh, census block groups. And that gets into finer detail. Um, and that's how we're able to, to demonstrate that there's actually no, um, disadvantaged, unincorporated communities within that area, those areas.
Okay, so I guess I'm just, wording I do understand. So the second to last paragraph, it says, uh, census tract 4901 and track number 4902 are considered a disadvantaged community, communities.
Which page are you referring to?
Page 30, second to last paragraph.
Right.
Kind of like in the middle of it.
Right. And there's actually, there's two definitions for disadvantaged communities. There's SB 244, which is specific to Lafco. And then there's also another one for SB 1,000, which goes into a little bit more detail as it relates to areas that may be affected by environmental health concerns and hazards that, such as like air quality, traffic, access to, um, public infrastructure, access to public transit. Um, and this, that analysis part of SB 1,000 is part of the housing element and general plan, as opposed to the SB 244 analysis, which takes a look at just the median household income, which is a Lafco, uh, a Lafco process.
Gotcha. So we have, we have two tracks that are considered disadvantaged communities under SB 1,000, but they're not considered disadvantaged communities under SB 244, which the, which the MSR is, is applying.
Yeah, and I felt it was important to include this information because it was part of the last housing element update and De novo planning group did a, a white paper on it. It provided a little bit more detail and comparison with the two, cause it can get kind of confusing because they're named the same. So that's kind of how, how I, how I brought it on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, thank you. Gary?
Uh, the councilman Swift's question about why the emphasis to the south. Uh, what we've done in the past is that's where the sewer is.
I had a feeling.
So you don't have to go all the way through town enlarging the sewer. And also the traffic patterns, it prevents people from the far north going all the way through town to Modesto, where most of the people go to work outside of Escalon.
All right.
So, yeah, it prevents digging up new streets.
Exactly. Thank you for that clarification. Anyone else? How about anybody on the phones? Anybody on the internet? Okay, we're gonna bring it back and we're gonna do what, we're gonna close the public hearing. And what are we gonna do now? Do we vote on it or?
Um, unless you have any other questions, yes.
Gentlemen, are there any other questions?
Not for me.
And just to provide additional clarification, this municipal service review is required in order to follow through with council's, uh, prior approval, which was to move forward with annexing, um, the 18-acre parcel over Brennan Avenue as well as that leftover piece.
This is one step in how many?
This is the, this is the first step. We have to get this completed in order for those.
Move forward.
Both of those, uh, properties have applications on hold.
File.
They've paid for their applications several years ago.
Right.
We wouldn't be able to move forward with them until this is approved by council and then approved by the Lafco board. And then they could apply for annexation.
Okay, but our input will be, at this, would be the end of our input or will we have more opportunities?
Uh, this, this item, unless there's any other items, this, this would be council's final approval on the MSR and then it would go to Lafco with any of the edits that you had asked on the mapping and such to make those more clear.
Okay, is there any, any other questions, gentlemen, before we blow on this? Gentlemen, you okay over here?
Yeah.
All right, we'll accept the motion then for the, uh, move on status recommendation. We got any of those?
Yeah, move that we authorize staff to submit the municipal service review, updating the Sphere of Influence Plan to the San Joaquin Local Agency Formation Commission for review and approval.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Very good, gentlemen, thank you. Now, we're gonna move down to the last item, I believe, which is, here, he's right here. Okay, number seven. No, no, excuse me, number eight. Consider resolution 2022 approving an agreement between the city of Escalon and the city of Oakdale for animal control services staff.
Okay, mayor, council, uh, tonight I'm gonna present, um, city, uh, city of Escalon provides residents with animal control services. In accordance with the city's municipal code 6.08, these services include providing licenses for residents' pets responding to calls of dogs and cats unattended in public areas, continuing loose animals and housing and caring for them at the East River Shelter until they can be returned to their owner or homes can be found for them. Animal control services have historically been providing the city staff with oversight by the Escalon Police Department. Over the past couple of decades, the city has struggled to maintain an adequate qualified staff at service levels that are designed by the community. Complaints are received regularly about the long response times, lack, lack of service available and short hours of operation at the animal shelter. The community's dissatisfaction has been heard clearly from the recent animal control assessment survey being conducted by the city. The general response of the survey thus far is that the city needs to provide longer shelter hours of operation, more staff to be responsive for calls, larger and better facility and expand services such as spay and neuter clinics and adoption events. Currently, the animal control division has three part-time employees with oversight from the community service officer. These staffing levels provide an average of 16 hours per week of shelter operations in which are routinely subsidized by police officers' time, approximately three hours per week for animal feedings. The cost of staff, equipment, building, maintenance and supplies provide the limited services, uh, levels continue to increase. The rising costs and lack of available staff force hours to continue to be reduced and deterioration of the operational efficiencies at the shelter. In an effort to address this, uh, situation, the police department has been working with several local agencies to evaluate potentially, uh, potential options that will improve the animal control shelter services to the community. Animal control service agreement continue. Uh, over time, the police department has, uh, researched expansion of the city's current animal control staff and shelter facility and has reviewed the operation of other agencies in the surrounding area who provide for such services for their communities and sometimes others. Some of these operations are very costly and not in close proximity to our city. Limited by the current funding levels, many of the options have been eliminated, including expansion of the city's staff and shelter. The remaining option that is in close proximity to the city has expanded hours, uh, excuse me, uh, been eliminated, including expansion of the city's staff and shelter. The remaining option that is close proximity to the city's has expanded hours of shelters operations and is within the existing budget in animal control services provided by the city of Oakdale. The location of the city of Oakdale's shelter is approximately five minutes greater than the current Escalon facility. The Oakdale shelter is open to the public for 39 hours per week compared to Escalon's 16 hours. Escalon staff will be able to transition to Oakdale employment if they desire. Cost for services to our residents will not be increased at this time as the cost for the collaboration with Oakdale on these services are within the existing budget of, uh, $150,000 to $191 versus $161,760. In addition, the city of Oakdale provides animal control and shelter services to the city of Riverbank, which provides local cooperation and, uh, synergies that should help keep future costs down. The improved services level for the Escalon residents are a reasonable cost, cannot be overlooked. Uh, there's an attachment included with the paperwork. The police department staff, with the support of administration, has been working with the city of Oakdale to negotiate a potential contract for animal control services, which I, is recommended for approval by the resolution as it's attached.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, uh, we're gonna open it up to the public and have some input. If there's anybody who wanna talk about this, would you please come to the podium?
I'll fire away, what the heck. Uh, I understand, Sean Strowman, I understand Chief Flores is doing the best job he can. But I'm making a request to the council and that is, in general, for city services, we need to get out of the habit of just farming things out just because of those fact we're farming things out. I mean, police dispatch, that issue came up. What happened? Armed it out to Ripon. Now we have an animal shelter issue. Arm it out to Oakdale. We're Escalon, darn it. We pay our taxes. We wanna keep things here in Escalon. We all love our little town. So while I think that this is a great idea and a temporary solution, I think it's not a long-term solution. Maybe an idea is we work together with the city of Oakdale, city of Riverbank, city of Escalon to come together for a regional shelter. All three cities come together, put some money towards it. It's a win-win. But to continually farm out what city services, what quite frankly should be here for Escalon, I think we should seriously take a look at it. That's all.
Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to introduce, uh, Chief Jerry Remar from Oakdale. Can answer some of your questions if you.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, the name was?
Jerry.
Chief what?
Jerry.
Jerry.
Remar, if I'm right.
Jerry, thank you for coming this evening. Uh, anyone out there would like to have questions for this gentleman? Go ahead. If there's anybody online, on the phones, speak up. Not hearing anybody, we're gonna bring it back to the council and let them ask questions. Gentlemen?
So are we?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Peter. Oh, thanks. Um, so we had the animal shelter there off of river. Is that, are we shutting that down or what?
At this point, if the contract goes through, they will be working from the shelter, uh, our shelter, and once they get their operation going, I believe everything's gonna shift over to Oakdale.
So that facility, which is right in front of the, right next to the wastewater treatment plant, right there, off the left side of River Road?
Correct.
That would shut down, so no more animals there. That's not where anybody's stationed. Is this gonna impact the, the, the people we have working specifically for animal control? Are they gonna lose their jobs or are they gonna keep going?
No, they're not. They've got, uh, first opportunity to apply with the Oakdale.
Okay.
And they'll be looked at and potentially hired first before any other people.
So when the facility does shift to Oakdale and there's a stray dog walking down my street and I call up and I go, hey, can you guys come pick this dog up? Is somebody gonna be coming from Oakdale?
Well, yes, sir.
And they're gonna take it back to Oakdale and do whatever they do with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's, that, that's not necessarily correct. The contract says we're gonna provide 28 hours of animal patrol services within the city of Escalon. So we will have an animal patrol officer, um, designated for those 28 hours. So if you called within those 28 hours, there will be here somebody, there will be somebody here to serve you.
What 28 hours? How's that work? Per month or week?
Per week, sorry.
Week, thank you.
Is that like nine, nine to three or?
Well, that was asking the next question. What were the hours on that twenty-eight hours?
Those twenty-eight hours, it's in the contract that it will be mutually agreed upon between the city of Escalon.
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
It's, it's gonna be up to the city management.
Okay.
And then, of course, I would have to agree to it also.
Of course.
So how would we address, uh, outside of those hours? How does that work?
So if it's a sick, injured, or vicious animal, um, that would be up to the watch commander at the, uh, police department or, um, any designated staff, and they could call us. We have to respond within fifteen minutes to the phone call, and then we have to be able to respond to your city within one hour of the phone call for that service. And then, and then we pass that cost along to you, um, accordingly.
And the, the budget is not impacted a lot? Like, it seems to me this would cost the city more than what we're already doing.
Saves us ten thousand.
Or it saves us money.
A little bit over ten thousand.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
So Gus, in your opinion, you feel this is a lot more efficient for you at this time?
Well, I believe the citizens of Escalon deserve, uh, better, uh-
Service.
Services. So, uh, Oakdale can provide those services. At this time, sometimes our shelters open, sometimes it's not because we got, we're lacking staff, they're not available, um, so.
So if I could just say a few things, I'm not here to, to advocate or to, to sell a service. Um, Escalon came to us and, uh, based on what their request is and what we're able to provide, it's actually mutually beneficial to everybody. We've been providing animal services to Riverbank since two thousand nine. Um, we were doing a one-year contract, they're, um, extremely happy with the service that we've provided to them, so they elected to go to the five-year contract because it became a, an annual thing and they were tired of it, so they came to us. You guys will see, uh, a savings of ten thousand dollars a year, Oakdale's gonna see a savings of six thousand dollars a year, and Riverbank's gonna see a savings of six thousand dollars a year. I heard somebody express, um, s- some concern that you're farming it out. Um, I don't consider it being farmed out because you're still getting an animal patrol officer that's gonna be driving an Escalon animal control truck. Most of your customers will not see the difference. The only difference that they're gonna see is that they're gonna have to drive another five miles, um, not even into the city limits, but it's still on the same road, it's still on River Road. So you're gonna see more customer service, you're gonna see extended hours. Um, our agreement with Riverbank is that we extend our hours, we're gonna open it for four hours on Saturdays, that's gonna be a benefit to all three communities. So it's a win-win, um, from, from my point of view, but that's obviously-
I would agree. I, I looked at the contract, I read it, and it makes sense. You know, we're small communities, it makes more sense to centralize it. It makes it cheaper for everybody, it's a better situation for the animals, it's a better situation for people looking for the animals. It's, it's a better, it's a win-win situation for all who's involved. I liked it.
Can I, can I answer?
Sure.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'd like to answer one thing about, about the shelter. We also put it in the contract that we would have access to Escalon's animal shelter. We're not gonna do any services out of the Escalon shelter, but in the, uh, in the chance that we get, um, we exceed our capacity-
Good point.
-at Oakdale, we're gonna need access to that. But as, as we get going with the contract and, and we, we get used to the new normal, our animal patrol officers and shelter attendants will, will learn how to manage all the animals from Oakdale and then will eventually move completely out of the Escalon.
Absolutely.
But I, I don't know how long that's gonna be, it could be a week, it could be a year, but we just need access to that so that we can make sure that animals are serviced appropriately.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Smith.
I was gonna say, um, you know, actually, to Mr. Strowman's point, I mean, I think what's happening is that this is an economy of scale where it's not worth it for us. However, this will, in essence, become the regional facility that, now that was mentioned a while ago. Another question, do you still have, several years ago, there was actually a fundraising arm, number of group people in Oakdale, not if it was a nonprofit or what, that benefit of the shelters, that still exists?
Yes, so we have, we actually have two. We have O-Spot, which is Oakdale Shelter Pet Alliance.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they have a very strong network of volunteers, so, uh, they help us out tremendously. They come and they walk the, they, they associate the animals, they socialize the animals, and then, um, they actually walk the dogs for us. Um, so that, that's a, that's a fairly large volunteer group that, that helps us out. And then there's also the, um, Astro Foundation, which stands for Animal Shelter to, uh, Riverbank and Oakdale. Um, it'd probably be pretty easy for them to put an E on the end, it's still called the Astro Foundation. But that's, that, that's up to them. So what they do is they, they collaborate with us quite a bit, and when we have to take in any animals, um, mostly cats, that we have, um, issues housing, they will come take them from us. Um, they have a huge spay and neuter, um, resource, so that, so they help us tremendously at the shelter. They also, um, they lease one of our public buildings, they raise funds through that because they have a thrift shop there. With the thrift shop, they've been able to open a facility at Fifth and E where they house, oh, I couldn't even tell you how many cats, it could be up to a hundred, but that's an adoption facility. And because they run that adoption facility, it keeps our, our animal population low and keeps us almost at a, at a zero euthanization shelter.
Well, the reason I wanted to bring that up, uh, I think it was that second one, uh, I heard a presentation at an Oakdale Alliance meeting several years ago, and boy, they sound like they had their act together. And, uh, they're a big, big help. Do they have any reaction to possibly taking Escalon in?
So I have a meeting with them on, uh, Wednesday at noon.
Okay.
And I have, I've talked to them, when, when we started talking about taking on Escalon, I talked to, uh, the past president and somebody that's very, uh, familiar with them, uh, with the, not just familiar with it, very, very involved with them, um, that they thought that it would be a great thing to do.
Okay, okay.
Where's the shelter actually located? You said River Road, but where on River Road, just for the community to hear this?
So, um, do you know where Liberini is? Do you know where the, it's, I'm sorry, it's not actually on, on River Road, but it's-
Okay.
Nearly on River Road, it's just off of, um, River Road on a, um, on Liberini. Do you, it's basically almost at the corner of River Road and one-twenty.
Okay.
Yep.
Where the light is.
Keep going.
Right there, okay.
Keep going, you hit the Oakdale Rec area.
Yeah.
Sounds like River, yeah.
Okay.
Exactly, it's at the Oakdale Rec area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands it's not, really not that far of a difference.
All right, any more questions, this gentleman?
No, I'm good.
Okay, we've already done the crowd and the phones and all that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, I think we're gonna have to make a decision here, so, uh, I'll accept the motion.
I'd like to move on to staff's recommendation. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second in favor of staff's recommendation, all those in favor? Aye. Was opposed? Carries five oh. Beautiful. All right, uh, this brings us down to the council communications, uh, Mr. Crummett, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ralphs.
You're welcome.
Uh, I'd like to say, uh, good to see you back, glad you're in good health.
Thank you.
Like to say, uh, yeah, a word about Greg Largent, uh, he was my coach, played baseball for him for three years, um, sophomore, junior, senior. Um, he was a great coach, I played for Bob Lorero my freshman year, and, um, Greg was a very professional man. Uh, he was intense, he was a competitor, and obviously he had great success, um, coaching, uh, varsity baseball at Escalona High, uh, two thousand eleven, we won the TVO and that kicked off a lot of sequential victories and, and, uh, he's, he's just done a great, great job. I'm very, uh, sad to hear that he, uh, passed away. Um, there's a lot of, uh, I think there's a lot of exciting things going on in the city right now. We've got, uh, I think the MSR being pushed forward was, uh, long overdue, it's a good thing. We've got upgrades to our utility systems, um, we have good discussions going on right now, really, really serious discussions about senior housing. Um, I know that's moving forward about improving the rec facilities. There's just a lot of positive things going on right now, and I don't want, um, the election that's happening right now to put a damper on that. I want everybody to know out there, whoever's watching, that all of the candidates running, two-year, four-year, doesn't matter, the consensus, the, everybody wants Escalon to remain small and a nice place to live. There's, there's, and so I just wanna put this out there that everybody should maintain themselves, especially on social media, with a sense of, um, respect and, uh, um, you know, I, uh, I just think the election should go as, as smooth as possible. You know, small-town elections are tough and they're weird and they get muddied and all this stuff, but everybody running cares about frankly the same stuff, it's just about going about it different ways. Um, so just to put that out there. The last thing I wanna bring up, I think we've been kinda been dancing around this, I know we're gonna talk about it later, but I want the council to, and I don't really wanna wait until the election's over, this is something we can push forward now. Um, I think we need another sales tax measure for public safety. Um, I think we tried Measure S, it was a specific one that needed a, I think, a two-thirds vote, uh, didn't pass, but it did get over fifty percent. Um, and the reason we didn't do a general, um, a general thing was because then, you know, the money can go different places. But I, tonight, would like to get the temperature of the council and see if we wanna talk about doing another public safety bond measure that would be a general one, um, that we could probably try to get maybe on the twenty twenty-four election. I know these things take time, but that would be a general election, you'd get more input. Um, is anybody interested in discussing that up here?
We really don't have the format for it right now. You, you can bring it up and-
Well, what's the format?
You'd probably wanna put an agenda and talk about it in a agenda.
Okay, well, I, that's what I meant. Uh, can, can we get it on a agenda to discuss?
I would imagine probably for nothing else, we could at least get down on the record that this particular council will be supporting it if it gets to that, so, yeah, I'd, I'd back that up.
Just talk about it, okay? So, Zach, Dominique, are we cool with that? Okay. Um, that's about it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Hagan.
Um, I'd like to echo a lot of what Peter had said in regards to Greg, uh, as well as, um, you know, being a civil discourse and, and, uh, you know, treating each other with decency and respect, um, regardless of, um, you know, having disagreements on stuff. Um, as far as the other stuff I wanna go over, um, there's a couple of questions that I can address, like the high school track question. Um, I know the district is actively looking, uh, at doing that. Uh, last meeting I talked to them, they, um, were actually looking at using some COVID, uh, some of their COVID funds to make that happen. Um, as far as, um, the PSA announcement occurred, I think that was a great, uh, idea to put that out so people are reminded of that, so they can play a role in the election. Um, um, I also wanted to echo what Peter had said to Dixie in particular, that senior housing is, is definitely, we're trying to find an active solve for you right now, um, so it's not something that's on the back burner. Um, and there's a couple of good opportunities moving forward, um, but we can't really, uh, talk about that currently right now as far as like specifics. Um, and, let me see, oh, I had some other stuff. See. Uh, as far as the, um, recreation stuff, um, I did get the equipment like I had promised in my appointment, uh, paperwork, that, um, I would get that for the programs, um, that is available and we will be implementing that. Um, I submitted a, a plan to the rec department and they are, um, with the help of the staff, uh, helping to, uh, really review that and see where we go forward as far as getting not only fun but also that kind of competitiveness that's there that helps kids thrive in their, their lives, uh, moving forward. So I'm excited to see where that goes here, uh, soon. Um, as far as, um, a couple of other things, uh, on a side note, I wanted to thank the, the city as well for playing a role in this, uh, but also with Robert, uh, we're working on a, a community garden idea that is, um, um, outside the city purview, but the city plays a little role in, in helping guidance with stuff. And, uh, so I wanna thank, uh, a couple of different, um, people in this process that we're still kinda moving forward with, uh, but I've got a lot of really good feedback from people in the community, so I'm real excited about that. So all the ladies that have been helping me with the Escalon Strong, uh, nonprofit, I really appreciate everything you're doing, um, there. Uh, we're getting, uh, a lot of feedback from, um, different people to help, so Ace Hardware is definitely gonna help us, uh, Normak, um, I believe, uh, Robert had gotten some people to, uh, help us out through the FFA and, and Dent Elementary, uh, is, uh, real excited about it. And I really want to say thank you to, um, to Pastor Kelly and, and Shatz who are playing a role in helping, um, allow us to bring this to the Lutheran church as far as the conversation, so really excited about that. Um, it's, it's a, it's an awesome thing to see the community really working together towards a common goal, uh, that's something that's gonna really benefit, fit our kids as well as, um, the, uh, the citizens at large. As far as the, the, um, stuff that we talk about is, uh, social media stuff, um, uh, I am definitely, um, getting a, a professional level, um, moderator experience for the citizens, uh, to be able to have candidate conversations and quality feedback, uh, so that there's an active dialogue, um, in that setting. Um, and so I have sought out and found, um, a professional level, um, experience for everyone in our town, and it would, the best part of it is it is being done pro bono, which is a pretty awesome thing. Uh, we're talking about, uh, people that really want to look and protect freedom of speech as well as allow, uh, our candidates to, um, put out information and, uh, specifically vetted information that they can, uh, the voters can then know is, uh, something that they can rely on.
Councilman Hagan, I just wanna make sure you don't go to, go, uh, into discussions of, or using your plat, using your position or platform to talk about candidate statements or-
I apologize, it's, it's for all candidates, so it's not for me?
Understood, thank you.
Okay, and that's, uh, I think that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Bellinger.
Uh, just wanna say, chief, uh, congrats to you and your, uh, team of officers, it's great to see the promotions and the, uh, recognitions that continue to happen around here. I love that, so keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that very much. Um, not sure if everybody was there, but the car show was a success. I'm not sure if we made a record or not with the number of cars, but if it wasn't, it was close. Place was busy and it was hopping and had a lot of great folks out there, just seemed to be enjoying themselves, having a good old time, so that was great to see, and, uh, I think I'm just gonna leave it at that tonight.
Okay, Councilman Vice Mayor Swift.
All right, thank you very much. Um, your dad said you're fifty-five, by the way.
Yeah, he did. Appreciate that.
All right. Uh, anyway.
I'll remember that, sir.
Yeah, again, chief, uh, you know, congratulations for Sergeant Zabran and Reserve Officer Humala. I think I'm in the ballpark.
Humaus.
Huma, I wasn't in the ballpark.
Parking lot.
Tell, congratulations, please. And then, of course, Officer, uh, Maldonado for his, uh, MAD award. Uh, couple of brief things, yeah, this political gobbledygook that you guys, everybody's been reading, uh, on Facebook, I think the one, another thing that needs to be pointed out is that every candidate has probably either seen or heard of all the fun we go through these council meetings, and, including the ones where we get a pretty serious drubbing at some ti, sometimes, sometimes by people who maybe not, don't have all the information, yet they're still running for council, yet they still wanna, they still feel that in their heart they can make a positive influence for this community. And you know what? That's, that's fantastic. Every last one, that is fantastic. So keep that in mind, despite everything you hear and everything you see, they still wanna make a positive difference for this town, and I applaud them all. Uh, this was a great meeting tonight. This was a very productive meeting tonight, so that's very good to see. Couple of quick things, Sunday, October second, Escalon Chambers Pumpkin Carving, uh, Contest is over on Main Street. Bring your kiddos, bring your grandkiddos, it's gonna be a great time. And also, I don't know if this has been, uh, announced to everybody or not yet, but December tenth is Christmas on Main, so it should be an awful lot of fun, too. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you, Councilman. Um, just a couple of things here. Uh, Peter, you were asking this evening something about what happens when cities don't comply with state law.
Yes, sir.
Well, I sat in a meeting and interviewed about six different firms, law firms, and one of them brought up an interesting thing, that the city of Newman has balked at the idea of, uh, participating in the, I think it's ten eighty-three where the garbage thing was, and their council voted against it. Now, where it's gonna go, nobody knows, but just for your information, there are city councils out there who are putting their foot down and saying enough's enough. What they're demanding is state, state assistance, is what I believe is what the problem is, and I don't disagree. And I, I really feel like sometimes maybe we should get into the mode where we say, hey, look, we'll meet you halfway, but help us. Because I think smaller communities, the onus on them is a little bit too much, I think. And I think, I'm gonna call Newman and speak to their council members and see where it's at. I don't wanna damage the city or their credibility, but I would like to know if there was a, maybe enough of us that say, hey, look, come on, we'll do this, but help us. So, you know, that was to your thing.
Yeah, thank you.
We also found out in those meetings I met with the lawyers at the prevailing wage, there is some flex room in the prevailing wage, and that is if in certain smaller projects, if you have certified help, you can get by without prevailing wage, and they didn't specify how large or how small, but there is some window of opportunity there, okay? Uh, the smoke shop is an embarrassment and, uh, Len, I met, I called the owner, I know her personally, and she apologized and said that that'll be remedied as soon as possible, and she'll pick the color and it won't be, uh, one of those interesting colors. The- The car show was, it was a record. Reeve Donenball was the head of that, and I helped and a few other people helped, and he did an extremely wonderful job, and he should be commended for it. Alliance Club has given a tremendous amount of money back to this community and will continue to do so. The Lions Club, a little bit prejudiced here, but I think they do a tremendous job in this community. Mr. Swift is also part of that. I met the lawyer groups, we went through six groups. The reason I'm bringing this up is, I really believe anytime an interview like that exists, that this council should never prevent another council member from wanting to participate. I think that's wrong. If they don't want to participate, that's fine, but to stop anyone else is wrong. I think any council member interested enough to be in the interview process, or a city attorney should be allowed to do that. And I'm gonna work on getting an ordinance or something to that effect, because I think it's totally wrong to stop a council member, elected official of this community, to be involved in that type of interview process. That was something I really thought was wrong. Okay, somebody asked about a track, I think you touched on it, there was a five million dollar grant to the high school for COVID funds. My understanding, they were gonna spend the money on the track and the football field, and they had a surplus of a couple million left, I believe, and I don't know what they're gonna do with that. My recommendation is use, fix the damn pool. What else was there? Recs, I don't do that. I'm sorry?
School district board meeting.
Yeah. The other thing is the trailer park. My heart goes out to you guys. I don't have a solution, but I want to talk to you about it a little bit this evening. I want to thank the staff for all their hard work. I think it's been a funny, I'm glad to be back. Missed all these mugs, but I think we're doing fine as a community. I think our community has a big heart. I think everyone, like Mr. Swift mentioned, has good intentions. But hopefully, we get the people in there that have better than good intentions and actually can do something, okay? Meeting's over, thank you for coming. Close session.